Our call to order, this meeting of the Cowie County Board of Education, Agenda 808, 6:30 PM, Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Recognitions, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'll call on Public Information Officer Dean Jackson to bring your recognitions. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Horton, board members. We have several recognitions tonight for honors that have been earned by students in our theater, chorus, and drama, excuse me, theater, chorus, and band programs in our high schools and in our middle schools. We're going to get to those in just a few minutes, but our very first presentation tonight is our core business. Tonight is from East Cowie to High School, and I'm going to call on Principal Steve Allen to make these introductions.
Good evening, board. First of all, I want to say this. It's National School Board Appreciation Week. Thank you all so much for your dedication, your humor, and the care carrying of our kids here. And I know that's what it's at the very base of your heart, and it's very evident because you're out in the schools. You're there, you support us, and you know, our core business, none of us will have a job without the core business. The core business is getting ready to come through these doors here in a few minutes. Three, over 3,000 people have a job because of these kids, and we've got to work tirelessly each and every day to reach, teach, and motivate them. Thank you for the support, we need it, okay? So first of all, tonight, we've got a computer science class that we have started. Todd Crafton has done a phenomenal job with this class. You'll see some things that's going to go over your head like it did in the demonstration when I did it. I had no earthly idea what they were talking about. It is a great program. It is, it's one that is going to teach them and lead them down a road of very, to be very successful in their life, and we've got two very smart individuals here, just happen to be our Val Sal that's with us here tonight. So one more thing I want to tell you, the packages back there, the purple and gold, we want to make sure that we represented East Cowie tonight, and in one of those packages is an all-expense-paid trip to Turin, Georgia. And and I know who got that. So if further ado, let me just introduce a brilliant teacher. He'll introduce our kids to you, and they'll go through the program. Get ready, you've got some QR codes there, he'll explain the process on those. Get your phones out and get them ready. Folks, you in the audience can do the same thing if you want to play along with the games. You can get your phone on, when the QR codes come up, you can scan them. Todd Crafton.
Thank you all, and I just want to say happy National School Board Appreciation Week. My name's Todd Crafton, I've been a teacher at East Cowie for 15 years now. In fact, the man sitting in the middle seats, the guy that I interviewed with and hired me many, many years ago, back when he was the athletic director. So hopefully I didn't make your job too hard. So I started out teaching social studies and have moved on to computer science. You want to go to the So in January of 2020, I was actually, was asked to take over the computer science course. The teacher that was going to teach it left. They asked me because they knew that I went to Georgia Tech, new computers. I said, sure, I'll take it. We had one class of, one section of one course, AP Computer Science Principles. Today, four years later, we now have 12 total sections of four total classes. We teach four different computers programming languages because I want the kids to be able to have experience with a wide range that when they go to college, a language that they're going to learn will be similar to one of these four, if it's not one of these four. It started out with just me as a part-time social studies teacher, teaching computer science. We now have two full-time computer science teachers, so I'm incredibly happy with how well it's done. The scores have been, have been excellent. In the last two years, almost 60% of kids that have taken the AP Computer Science Principles test have gotten a three or higher, which means they are likely to get college credit for that course, and almost 70% of kids taking the Computer Science A, which is the highest level class, have gotten a three or higher, which that class, if you get a three or higher, you're almost guaranteed at least some kind of college credit at most major universities around the country. So I'm very, very blessed to have some of the top minds in this county as my students. I'm going to introduce two of them to you. First, we have our valedictorian, Anya Gvednik. She's going to walk you through the program that she wrote, board members. If you would like, that is the QR code on the left-hand side. In the audience, the QR code will be popping up here shortly. If you would like to scan it with your phone and play the game that was written by our very own students.
I want to start by saying happy School Board Appreciation Week. We very, we appreciate you very much, and I'll get on with my code. So my very first line, I create my global variables so that way I can use them throughout my code. If I have to create it through the code, it's really hard to keep it going through different functions. This whole first chunk that you see is creating the game itself, just like the very basic pieces of the bunny that you'll, it's your player, the aliens that you try to avoid, your carrot that you try to get, and it gives you the background, you're in space. And I use an iteration loop to create three aliens instead of doing the same process three different times because it comes very, very redundant. Then the next section of codes are, if you press the up button, the bunny goes up, you press the down button, the bunny goes down, left, right, it's the same for all of them. And so you don't have to keep clicking the button, if you hold it down, the bunny will move as far as, as long as you hold the button, button down. So the next section of code is when your bunny touches the carrot. So your bunny will go back to the normal color, your bunny will turn to the correct direction, you will gain a point, and once you get more than, once you get two or more points, you start, it's, the game starts increasing in difficulty, and more aliens will be added to make it just a little bit more difficult for you to actually beat the game. Once you get five points, congrats, you win, you can reload the page and play again. It's a little difficult, I apologize. This next section is what happens when you touch the alien, as I assume many of you have already been touched. Your bunny changes color, it turns its opposite direction, and you sadly lose a point. And then your score is updated. I have it set so that way you can never have less than three aliens because yes, I do want you to win, however, it can't be that easy. So how, but it is, in this program, you can't just take away one alien, you have to take away all of them. And so as the game is running, I have the counter updated to match how many aliens you have, and so if you see this if Never mind, I don't know where it is. Oh, for variable count two equals zero, that keeps track of making, of removing all the aliens and then adding them all back minus one if you have two or more points. So it is impossible to have less than three, I'm so sorry. If you get a score of less than or equal to negative five points, you lose, you can restart the game, try again. That's, that's the gist of the game, that's the gist of my code. If you want a little trick, you can go outside the box of the boundaries, and your bunny can hide and slide around the sides and pop in and out. I made, I left that in there because I thought it was too difficult to do without it. Thank you.
How long did it take you to write this?
About an hour. Thank you.
Next up, we have our salutatorian, oh, if you in the crowd, if you want to hit the QR code, you can play it now, play it later, pulls it up in a browser so you can save it for later. Our salutatorian, Minji Lee, is going to come up and talk to you next, but if she doesn't know, I'm about to tell you this, but I'm incredibly proud of Minji, not only because of her academic achievements, but because about a month and a half ago, she passed the US Citizenship Test and became a US citizen. So without further ado, Ms. Minji Lee, we'll talk about hers.
Thank you, and I also wanted to start out by saying happy School Board Appreciation Week. My code is simple, it's very simple compared to Anya's. It's in different code though, it's in JavaScript. I wanted to come up with something very short and simple, but also fun to play. So I love listening to music, so I came up with this game where if you type a choice of a singer, it will print the random lyrics of that artist, and you have to guess the title of the song. So I started by, you know, writing down the global variables like Anya did because like Anya described, it's very difficult to keep with all those variables when you're dealing with very long coding. So I created all the variables with different songs and different artists, and then I matched up each codes to go along with it. So if the, if the song and then the lyrics is in the same line, it matches, so the code will automatically sees as the lyrics matches the song, so once you type it, they're going to know which one goes with which. And I also did the Sentinel code for the function start. If you see the while loop there, it's going to, so what Sentinel code does, it breaks when it, when the player, you know, enters the invalid variable, but if the player types the valid variable, it's going to continue on the loop where it's in the each different functions of each artist and each song. So it's first going to print which artist are you choosing, and if you type the right artist, it's going to then go to the loop and ask you, it's going to print you the random lyrics of a song by Randomizer, and after that, it's going to ask you what type of song, like what's the song title, and if you guess it right, it's obviously going to print you're correct and then the song title, and if not, it's going to say you're incorrect, and it's going to tell you what the song is. Yep, that's it.
And those of you that want to, I don't know any of them outside of like Blank Space by Taylor Swift, that's about one, I got one song. There's that one. And then, board members, if you go to the next one, I took the liberty of modifying Anya's code just a little bit. If you want to hit this one, instead of a bunny being chased by aliens for a carrot, it is in fact Mr. Horton being chased by a bunch of marked guys trying to catch a report around Cowie County Schools. So
Just when I was going to say what a great hire you were back in '08.
That was, that was, that was Steve's idea. So, so thank you all for everything you all do, thank you all for your attention. They, these girls and the students I teach make me look a whole lot better and make us all look, look good, so thank you all again.
I want to add in real quick with, I noticed that one of the languages that you're, you're teaching is Python, and I actually work on the research side at Georgia Tech, and I am not a software guy, please don't go there. But our software engineers use Python every day. That is, they'll certainly use it in college, and that's, you know, real-world experience with Python right there that'll prepare them for a great future, so that's, I mean, that's excellent.
Yeah, one, a couple of the courses, you can choose which language you want. Computer Science A is dictated by College Board, it's Java, it's one of the primary languages for the internet, along with HTML. I chose JavaScript for Computers, AP Computer Science Principles because it's a nice stepping stone to get up to Java, the syntax is the same. And Python I chose exactly for that reason. It's a totally different syntax structure, but it is a language that is used almost everywhere. And, and I really wanted our kids to be prepared, no matter where they go, what language they're looking at, they'll at least be used to at least the structure of the language in order to, once you learn the structure, the basics of it come rather easily. It's learning that syntax and stuff that's the most difficult point, so you're absolutely correct.
Yeah, I can testify that Python, Python is being used by software engineers writing military electronic warfare software on a daily basis at Georgia Tech, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, East Cowie to High School. We'll move on to our recognitions tonight, and the first one is of our high school theater programs, and we have with us Scott Andavchik, who is the East Cowie to High School Theater Director, Director of Echo Stage, who will introduce this and a number of students he has with him tonight. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Horton, Dr. Guy, Chairman, Mr. Copeland, and the rest of the school board. I know I have met most of you, however, just in case if you don't know who I am, my name is Scott Andavchik, I'm the Theater Director at East Cowie to High School. With me tonight, representing Echo Stage, which is the theater program at East Cowie to, are our club officers. We have Leila Navarro, Olivia Rodriguez, Annabeth Shellnut, Aspen Sousa, and Olivia Young. So first, let me thank you for having us here to celebrate Theater in Our Schools Month tonight. Tonight, we are not just representing East Cowie to Theater, but all theater in the county. Though most events at the high school lever, level, excuse me, are competitive, theater thrives in a collaborative environment. We have worked hard to take the drama, literally out of drama or out of theater, literally not just the word drama, but even the title, so I'm thankful for the state for finally switching over to theater and not drama. But we worked hard to take drama out of educational theater in Cowie to County because we know that theater allows people the opportunity to build relationships with each other and the world around them, not drive a wedge of competition between them. Through theater, we learn to use our own voice while also learning to emphasize with the voice of others around us. Though we occasionally have our fair share of drama queens, we choose to instead label our students with such descriptors as talented, gifted, driven, and students that rank among the top of their class. In fact, one of Cowie to County's star students, Mariana Torres, is an East Cowie to Theater student. Theater requires students to be analysts, researchers, mathematicians, historians, psychologists, philosophers, and so much more in addition to developing the skills of acting, singing, and dancing. I know I speak for my colleagues at Northgate and Noonan when I say that the favorite part of our job is the unique nature of the relationship we get to build with our students as we watch them grow from artist from year to year. Here in Cowie to County, we are so grateful for the opportunity to have the theater program in our high schools. After meeting the eligibility requirements pertaining to performance, service, and technical aspects, students in these theater programs have the honor of being inducted into the International Thespian Society in order to become Georgia Thespians. Georgia Thespians is the third-largest thespian organization in the nation, hosting what is considered by the Educational Theater Association Administration to be the best state conference. Each year during the first weekend in February, over 6,000 theater students and educators gather in Columbus, Georgia for a three-day conference filled with workshops, productions, competitions, and as you can imagine, quite a few students bursting out into song and dance. At this year's conference, all three high schools were awarded the title of Honor Troops by Georgia Thespians for their work during the 2022-2023 school year. East Cowie to and Northgate were awarded the Gold Honor Troop, both accruing over 100 points, and Noonan was awarded a Bronze Honor Troop accruing 79 points. These accolades represent the dedication Cowie to Theater students demonstrate, not only for performing, but to our community. Points are awarded for shows produced as well as for community service activities and support of local theater. We tout the importance of celebrating performing arts because we love it and we know the value it brings to each of us within our larger community. During March, as we celebrate Theater in Our Schools Month, I challenge each of you and the community as a whole to re-up your commitment to investing in the arts. Not only is funding important and necessary for excellent theater to continue in Cowie to County, prioritizing attending shows makes a huge impact. When members of this school community show up for a production, it means so much to the performers, technicians, and directors involved, and shows that you not only value the work that they are doing, but you truly see them for who they are and want to cheer them on. So for those of you who may have missed out on seeing a past performance, do yourself a favor and get some tickets today. You will be amazed by what these students can do. In fact, you can start this weekend by attending All Shook Up, which is presented by Noonan High School Performing Arts on March 16th, 17th, and 18th. Next month, Northgate High School will be presenting Sousa Call the Musical on April 18th, 19th, and 20th. And finally, you can see these students standing next to me, performing Matilda the Musical, presented by Echo Stage on April 25th, 26th, and 27th. All of these shows will be performed at the Nixon Center. Thank you for your time this evening, and I look forward to celebrating these students with you at the theater.
Good job, I will take just a few minutes to say well done. I know how difficult that is, I'm a huge supporter of arts and musics in our schools, and I love the fact that it's now theater, that is fantastic, and I will be at Matilda. I look forward to it every year.
Thank you, East Cowie to High School Theater. We are now going to recognize the students who were selected for 2024 All-State Chorus. We have Arnold Middle School, Bass Middle, and East Cowie to High School Choral Directors here. I'm going to call on Kelsey Armstrong from Arnold Middle School to come up first, and not only do that, but also sort of recognize this honor for us, thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, I am Kelsey Armstrong, I do teach at Blake Bass Middle School. It's fine. Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for organizing this for us, and thank you to the board for having us here tonight. Mr. Jackson did ask me to explain just a little bit about what this honor means. So each fall, about 6,000 students from across the state of Georgia participate in first-round All-State Chorus auditions. They're asked to perform a solo, scales, and then three sight-reading examples that they have never seen before, and they only have 30 seconds to practice before they have to perform it, hopefully perfectly. They get a score on that audition, and then a cutoff score is posted. If they pass that first-round audition, then they move on to the second round. In the second round, they have to learn all of the music for the entire concert that they will perform at the event in February, and they get tested on just portions of it, but they don't know what portions will be tested until they walk into that room. So they really have to know all of the music when they walk in. If they pass that second round, they are named to be members of the All-State Choir, and from 6,000, that is brought down to 1,500 students from across the state, split across four high school ensembles and three middle school ensembles. We have the great pleasure of having several schools represented here tonight, and I do want to say thank you to the school board for your continued support of arts in our community. It does not go unnoticed, and it is both music in our Schools Month and theater in our Schools Month, so it is very appropriate for us to be recognizing this this evening. I am joined by Ms. Angie Markham, our Assistant Principal, and we would like to recognize our Blake Bass students, Avery Waters, Claire Lowe, and Whit Proudy, and Parker Bailey could not be here with us tonight.
Hello, my name is Robin White, I'm the Chorus Director at Arnold Middle School, and I'm here along with Dr. Patrick Sullivan to proudly introduce our students who made it into the Georgia All-State Chorus. I have seventh grader Kyla King and eighth grader Leo Aparicio Paz. And these students, they are tremendous singers, they're leaders in their classes, and they're just overall hard workers. They wanted to make it, and they truly worked on it. They earned their way into this prestigious choir, and the Arnold staff and their peers are so very proud of their accomplishments. So congratulations, Kyla and Leo.
Good evening, I'm Kristy Howard from East Cowie to High School, and I'm here with Mr. Steve Allen, our principal, to recognize, I have two All-State students. One with me here this evening is freshman Ryan Daly, this is Ryan's second time being chosen for All-State Chorus. And senior Alexander Rice could not be with us this evening due to a very important Eagle Scout Review Board, but this is Alexander's fourth year being chosen for All-State Chorus, so he's disappointed to not be here tonight, but truly an honor for him to be four years in All-State Chorus. As Ms. White said, we truly are grateful for the support that our board and our administrators show us and allow us to have these opportunities for our students, and, you know, these kids are some of the most well-rounded kids in our school system, because if you look at the other activities they participate in, it doesn't stop with just our music programs, it doesn't stop with our theater programs. These are our, some of our highest honor students, some of our students whose club activity resumes extend down to the bottom of the page, so the support that their parents and all of you give them, and also us as educators, is definitely appreciated, so thank you.
I want to take just a minute, because some of you may not know this, but I was asked last year to take a seat on the GMEA State Board, that's the Georgia Music Educators Association. So I've sat through some of these meetings, and I want you to know how incredibly hard it is to do what you guys have done. It is incredible, they said 6,000 students try out. I remember on the state board meeting last year, they were telling us about these All-Star, the All-Star tryouts coming up, and I'm so proud that you guys, it is incredibly difficult to do. And for you guys to do it and represent Cowie to County, I say thank you, and I'm going to brag on you guys at our next state meeting, but on behalf of GMEA, congratulations.
I have a brief comment. I, I have the privilege every Thursday at East Cowie to High School, when I'm calling a JV football game or a ninth grade football game, to hear some of these talented students and singers sing the National Anthem. And you will hear no better rendition of the National Anthem than these young students, and they're nervous, and I have to convince them, don't be nervous because you're the best singer in this whole place right here. But, but it is such an honor and a pleasure to hear these young students sing. You don't have to worry about technical difficulties, so thank you, Ms. Howard, and I'm sure that you other Choral Directors do the same things at your high school, so thank you, and come out some Thursday, 5:30 in football season, you'll get to hear some of these talented students.
Parents, if y'all want to come down, y'all can come grab a photo as well, yeah.
Yeah.
Band. And we have the programs from Northgate, East Coweta High, Lee Middle, and Bass Middle who are with us tonight. I'm going to ask them to come on down, and I'm going to ask Northgate High School Band Director Alan Armstrong if he would introduce.
My name is Dr. Ashley Wilkson, the principal of Northgate High School. Thank you so much for taking the time to recognize these All-State honor students. They are absolutely fantastic, and we also have Alan Armstrong, who's going to tell you a little bit about the program.
Good evening. Before we start, I want to offer a personal thank you to Dr. Horton, our admin, and our Board of Education. If any of you have been to any of the high schools, you've seen a little change in the landscape. There's three band towers that have been placed, that have taken the place of some dilapidated old towers created by our Booster Club that have lasted us for a long, and we are very appreciative, but these new steel towers are going to give our kids and our staff the opportunity to be a little safer when we're 30 feet in the air. And, you know, the marching band programs are only a small slice of what we do, but it is the most visible part of our programs for the community, so we appreciate your investment and the support we've had. So I wanted to offer that personal thanks on behalf of the high school directors. We have several folks here tonight that we want to recognize. I want to tell you a little bit about the All-State process. Dean asked us to give you a little bit of information. I spoke with our state... Well, you know Alan Fowler. I spoke with Alan this morning, our state GMEA Executive Director, and got these stats. We had 10,600 and some change instrumentalists audition at the first round this year, and understand that less than half of most high school bands actually audition. So we're looking at, you know, maybe 20,000 kids involved, and 10,000 and some change auditioned, and they accepted 800 instrumentalists into the All-State Band Programs. So we're looking at, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 8%, a little less than 8% of the kids who auditioned were accepted, and if we consider the overall band programs, these kids are truly among the elite. So we are very, very proud. We have one student from Northgate this year. This young lady made it as a member of the Bass Program last year, and she has continued her excellence as a freshman at Northgate, Ms. Ansley Dover. She's a bass clarinet player and has plans to move on and play for a living down the road, so we're really excited about what she's got ahead of her. So Ms. Ansley Dover.
This is a great opportunity that I'm really glad I've got to be a part of, and, yeah, so. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm Robert Owens at East Coweta High School, and I would also like to thank you guys, the board, for supporting the band programs. The past few years, we've had a lot of support financially, and like you was talking about, the band towers for the marching band, but also the community with the East Plos and everything else that you guys are doing. They're dramatically affecting the quality of our programs, so thank you guys for doing that. And also the parents in the community that's here. Obviously, it's the teamwork, and these guys would not be in the All-State Band if they didn't have supportive parents as well as the school system. So if there are parents in here, if you guys could stand up, please, just any parents that are of the kids up here, thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. So we had two students from East Coweta High School make the All-State Band this year. We have Mr. Brett Daniel, who is a percussionist and is in 9th grade, and this is his second time making All-State, and this year he was third-chair percussion in the All-State Band. And then Annabeth Schaper, this is her second time. She's a junior. This is her second time making the All-State Band, and she was fourth-chair oboe. So congratulations to you guys.
I'm James Christians. I'm the band director at Lee Middle School, and again, I do want to say thank you to all of the support and recognizing our students and all the hard work they have. One of the things I teach my kids from the very beginning, first day of 6th-grade band, is band kids are the best kids in the school. They lead the way, they show the way, they lift the school up and represent the schools in a great way, and these students represented Coweta County at the highest level in our state. So it's my great pleasure to also really thank you guys with the East Plos, too, with that getting passed a few years ago. I know with me coming into Lee five years ago, this year with my allotment this year, I was able to replace a 45-year-old set of timpani that was donated from Noonan High School when Lee was open in 2006. So that instrumentation is going away, and also, too, with one of our students, he made the All-State Band on one of the instruments that I was able to purchase with that East Plos last year on a Barry Sax. That was the first Barry Sax that Lee Middle School has ever owned as a school, so that really opens up some opportunities for these students to excel. So I would like to introduce our students from Lee Middle School. We have Grant Linsky. He made it on the Barry Sax, and he is one of four on his instrument out of the state. They only took four Barry Saxs out of the entire state, and he's one of four. So that's a massively big accomplishment. And then we also have Kate Kim. Kate Kim plays the flute. She's a fabulous flute, a fantastic musician, and she is... She was also... Flute is very competitive when you get to that level as well, so she was one of 12 in her band out of the state as well, too. So thank you very much, and thank you for having us this evening.
My name is Oscar Prado. I'm the band director at Blake Bass Middle School, and I'm really proud of these students here, and so our students, this is our first class that we've had for 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, so I'm really proud of the work that they've done. Piggyback on the directors, thank you so much for all the support, the East Plos money, and in fact, our students as well, that made the All-State group on those instruments, are their school-owned instruments. So I want to congratulate Ms. Kira McKinnon, who is a bass clarinet player, and Mrs. Zachariah Hilliard, who's our French horn player, and these students are... The bass clarinet essentially is like one out of five in the ensemble, and the French horn player also one of five in their ensemble, so it's very highly competitive, and those two instruments are instruments that are school-owned, because it's... You can't just write those instruments. So that support that we've had from you all financially comes a long way, especially when we opened up Blake Bass and we had that... It was just awesome to have that instrumentation to help these students continue to grow, and I know they're going to continue to pursue their band activities as they move on to the high school. So thank you so much, and again, congratulations to Kira and Zachariah, and thank you, parents, for your support. Thank you.
While you guys were taking that photo, I'm going to say what I did to the chorus students as well. On behalf of the Georgia Music Educators Association, I also sit on that state board. Congratulations. We talked last year about raising that bar a little bit and to see if the students could step up and could be a little more competitive, and you guys have made me so very proud, because it is incredibly hard to do what you guys have done and to compete on that state level. I'm going to be beaming at the next meeting I go to, and I'm going to be bragging on Coweta County, but I'm so proud of you guys, and know that it's really hard to do what you guys have done, and it's a huge accomplishment. I look forward to seeing you again next year. Good job. I want to come see that tower. I want to come climb it. Good job.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of February 13th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Action items, Group One, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have four action items for you in Group One tonight. The first one is to approve a proposal from Lee Middle School to purchase an LED message display sign. Lee Middle School PTO requests approval to purchase an LED message display sign. Estimated project cost is $29,129.49. Requirements aboard policy FEAE have been met. Supporting documentation is attached. This project will be funded by the Lee Middle School PTO. Recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve a proposal from Lee Middle School to purchase an LED message display sign. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I do have one question, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Horton, I've had a couple of citizens near me just kind of ask me if it's going to be bright, is it going to be distracting at night, is it going to be... I think they're not disappointed that the sign's coming, just to make sure that they're not... It's not going to be too bright at night.
Yes, ma'am. One of the things that we're actually requiring as part of this is that this sign, it will have a... It has the ability to be turned off during specific hours, so my recommendation to Dr. Westbrook's going to be that the sign only be on during business hours and that it be off at night, because we do want to make sure that we're good neighbors.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The next item I have for you in Group One is to approve a request to add Early Childhood Education III to the curriculum. We're recommending the addition of the CTAE High School elective course, Early Childhood Education III for 9th through 12th grade students at the base high schools. Currently, two of our four high schools offer Early Child Education I and II. This third course provides in-depth study of early brain development and its implications for early learning, appropriate technology integration, and developmentally appropriate parenting and child guidance trends. Also addressed collaborative parent-teacher-child relationships and guidance, child-directed play, the causes and effects of stress on young children, and infant nutrition. Additionally, these courses will support a commitment to prepare students for current and future high-need occupations and post-secondary learning opportunities in our region, as well as support the Technical College System of Georgia child education pathways offered at West Georgia Technical College, and the teacher pipeline courses offered at CEC. The addition of this third course, along with the existing Level I and II courses, will allow the base high schools to have an additional CTAE pathway that will be included in the College and Career Readiness Performance Index. Further, believe the addition of this course may also help in the identification and recruitment of students for the high-needs career areas in teaching and early childcare in Coweta County. This course will be in addition to the existing menu of connection options for high school students and will be taught by existing staffing allotments in our Family and Consumer Sciences Departments at the base high schools and using the existing Georgia Department of Education standards. The addition of this course also supports our commitments to the programs offered at Central Educational Center and is in alignment with our CTAE Advisory Board goals to increase pathway completion rates at the high school level. Students who successfully complete this course will be better prepared for the teacher pipeline courses offered at the Central Educational Center and early childhood care and education programs at the West Georgia Technical College. Early childhood education already falls under the eligible pathways available for resources through CTAE Perkins Funds. CEC Board and CTAE Advisory Board have also approved the request to add this class. All members, I recommend approval. I will add, of course, that overview is lengthy. The gist of it is this, no additional staff will be required, and we feel very strongly that this may help us down the road in a critical need area, which is early childhood education teachers for our kids. So with that, recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve a request to add Early Childhood Education III to the curriculum. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The next item I have for you in Group One is to approve a resolution to amend the FY 2023 State Capitol Outlay Application. Approval's requested for a resolution to amend FY 23 State Capitol Outlay Application. It's necessary to amend the 2023 Capitol Outlay Application to remove re-roofing of Building 5300. It's a 9th-grade building at Noonan High School. Damage to the roof on this building was repaired, and the roof does not require total replacement at this time. Copy of the resolution is attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve a resolution to amend the FY 2023 State Capitol Outlay Application. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I have one, just came to mind. Dr. Horton or Mr. Cheek, what is the life that we have left on that roof, do you know?
Mr. Cheek, that one was put on in 2007. We moved in. Typical lifespan on a roof like that, 2025?
25 to 30.
Yeah, 25 to 30.
Okay. Just making sure. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The last item I have for you in Group One is to approve a proposal from Northgate High School for the installation of a concrete pad for lacrosse practice. Northgate High School requests approval for the purchase of materials and installation for a concrete pad used for lacrosse practice. Project will be funded by the Northgate High School Lacrosse Booster Club. Total project cost for materials and labor is $2,550. Requirements aboard policy FEAE have been met. Supporting documents are attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve a proposal from Northgate High School for the installation of a concrete pad for lacrosse practice. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Action item, Group Two, bids.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only item we have in Group Two tonight is to approve a proposal for annual pumping of septic tanks and grease traps. Approval's requested for the proposal submitted for grease trap pumping and septic tank pumping at various locations. Winning proposal for grease trap pumping was submitted by Environmental Ribbids LLC with a total score of 98.25 points and a total bid of $25,690. The winning proposal for septic tank pumping was submitted by Dixon Environmental Services with a total score of 90.50 points and a total bid of $78,326. Proposal scoring sheets are attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve a proposal for annual pumping of septic tanks and grease traps. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Action items, Group Two... Oh, excuse me, Group Three, trips, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll call on Dr. Guy to bring you trips. Dr. Guy?
Thank you, Dr. Horton. The principal of East Coweta High School requests permission for the rifle team to participate in the All-Service Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps Air Rifle Championship in Port Clinton, Ohio, beginning Wednesday, March 20th through March 24th, 2024. Students will miss three days of school, but there is no cost to the school system.
Recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the East Coweta High School field trip. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll call on Mr. Keith Chapman to bring your budget report and sales tax. Mr. Chapman?
Financial report. We've completed 66.67% of the year, expended 66.17% of the budget, so within... Expended 66.17% of the budget, so within one-half percent. Now, we are over, at this point, approximately $3.5 million. If we did not have the supplements that were passed from the state in January and some buses that were budgeted in the prior year that we'll receive the funds for this year, if those two items weren't in there, we would be under budget at this point in the year. Sales tax, a little over $3 million in most recent collections. Year-over-year increase is 3.72%.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Call on Dr. Guy once again to bring you staff and student attendance and your board go report.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. The highest staff attendance for the last attendance period, highest staff was Glanton Elementary School. Highest student attendance in the program area was Central Educational Center. Highest student attendance for elementary school, Brooks Elementary. Highest middle school student attendance was Madgers Middle School. And the highest high school student attendance, home of the Vikings, Northgate High School. For our board go report this evening, I would like to remind you of the upcoming whole-board training, which will take place on Wednesday, March 20th, 2024, beginning at 9:00 a.m. here in this boardroom of Word Central Office. As a school board member, you have a great deal of requirements and obligations related to your role of service. And next week's session plays a significant function in your overall training requirement for school board service. You will be focusing on the system strategic plan, the impacts of content specialists, and you will also deal with system strategic waiver requests. Thank you for your continued support of education and thank you for the additional time that you devote to school board member training and professional development.
Thank you, Dr. Guy. Last item I have for you is the facilities and construction report. Northgate, the addition and renovation still on the report. We're just waiting on submission of roof warranty documentation. The re-inspection of the roof has been, has been completed there. Softball field houses, if you've been at each of the three high schools, those are coming along. East Coweta High, block work on the dugout and is continuing on the concession and press box. I was out at Noonan earlier today and it looked like they were working on a floor slab pour out there today. So that, that work is, is ongoing. And installation of block work is substantially complete now at Northgate. Band directors mentioned the band towers tonight. Those are up and installed. All electrical work has been completed, and they're just finishing up some fencing on those. Noonan High School, all work in bid package one is complete. We're just working to close out the financials on that. Bid package two, they're finishing up some handrail installs and painting some of those. And then there's still some work that needs to be done on the elevator with some punch list items that need to be completed. BP three, the academic buildings, was by there late this afternoon. You'll see some planter boxes. The footings and foundations have been poured for those, some of the brickwork starting to go on those. Also, about midweek last week, we had permanent power turned on to the building. So you'll see a lot of, especially what I call the east end of that building where the cafeteria is, you'll see some permanent lighting if you go by at night that is currently on. And they'll transition that from east to west as they work their way out. Grading on the front lawn is complete. Just working between weather, trying to prep for some sidewalks and some additional, some additional concrete work on the outside there. Project's still right on track, coming along perfectly. And really proud of the work that Mr. Cheek and his group, Dr. Drake, have done on that project to bring it in on time as of today. And they've done a really good job with it so far. So that is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. The next section, it's public comments, but there aren't any public comments today. So I'll just thank everyone for being here in attendance, in person and online. We really appreciate it. So moving on to board comments.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a quick comment on a night whom we recognized a lot of fine arts students. I want to recognize one of the biggest fine arts supporters in the school system and one of my favorite people, and she always slips in and sits at the back of the room, is Ms. Kathy Nixon. Like I said, she is one of the biggest supporters of fine arts in this school system. And starting probably earlier than this, but certainly in the spring, there's probably something going on at the Nixon Center virtually every night. Performances of some type. Get out and see some of those. And everyone, the center carries it off with a certain professional level that is unmatched anywhere. So Ms. Nixon, thank you for your dedication, for your service and your evenings spent in the spring. Thank you.
Are there any other board comments? Is there a motion to approve to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, real estate and potential litigation?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, I'm sorry, Mr. Robertson, Mr. Farmer, are y'all in favor? Seven to zero. Thank you.